Good evening, I'll call the Brandon Select Board to order and I will turn it over to the Town Manager.
Okay, uh, start a motion to have the agenda as written.
Boom.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, motion carries. Uh, item number two, election of select board officers. Taking nominations for Chair of the Select Board.
Of Mr. Seth Hopkins.
Right. Motion's second for Mr. Seth Hopkins as the Select Board Chair. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Hopkins is the Select Board Chairman. Vice Chairman. Entertaining motions.
Doug Bailey.
Motion for Doug Bailey, the second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Opposed? Motion carries, Doug Bailey is the Select Board Vice Chair. And entertaining the motions for the Select Board Clerk. Motion to nominate Tim Gao as the Select Board Clerk.
I decline. Done my duty. I'll nominate Tracy Wyman.
We have a motion to nominate Tracy Wyman.
Hi Tracy, I'm home.
As the Select Board Clerk, the second. All in favor, Tracy Wyman is the Select Board Clerk. Say aye.
Aye.
No opposed?
Aye.
Meeting back over to the elected Select Board Chair, Mr. Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. I do thank the Board for the renomination as Chair. And thank the voters for supporting the budget and for supporting the Select Board positions. Before we go further, I did want to take the opportunity to observe a moment of respectful silence if we could on the passing of former Budget Committee Member Doug Sawyer over the weekend. Doug had been fighting cancer for some time. He served the town really quite well for four or five budget writing seasons. And if we could rise and give him a moment. Thank you, will you be seated? The only information that I have about arrangements for Doug is that from 1:00 to 3:00 on Sunday at the Lilac Inn, there will be a time of remembrance.
1:00 to 3:00?
1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., this comes on Sunday. At this time, I do suggest that we take a consent agenda, including item three, to designate the Select Board as the Board of Liquor Control, the Board of Health, the Board of Sewer Commissioners, and the Housing Board of Review. Item four, to establish the meeting schedule at the second and fourth Mondays, 7:00 p.m. at the Town Hall. Item five, to adopt the rules of procedure for the Select Board of the Town as they currently are constituted. And to readopt the policy of appointed boards, commissions, and officials reporting to the Select Board. Item six, to designate the Official and Alternate Newspaper, the Official as the reporter and the Alternate Newspaper as the Brooklyn Herald. Item seven, to approve the minutes of the Select Board meetings of February 24th and March 2nd. And item 10, to appoint the Tree Ward, Defense Viewers, Inspector of Lumber, Shingles, and Wood, Lawyers of Coal, VLSG, Insect Control District Reps, Budget Committee, and Brooklyn County Solid Waste District as that list has been prepared by Owen Smith and included in the Board Packet. I make that a motion as a consent agenda.
I'm sorry, David.
Thank you. Is there anybody who'd like to remove any of those items and discuss them separately? If not, all in favor of the consent agenda, including items three, four, five, six, seven, and 10 on our agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any extensions? The ayes have it. I will disclose a personal and financial relationship with one of the lawyers Nicole.
Thank you, Seth.
Yes.
Thanks.
You need to make sure that that's clear. I don't think we have any other conflicts. Item eight, the Town Manager's report, Mr. Rapp.
My report for the week's February 24th from March 2nd. Segment six, we had a meeting today with Casillas, DuBois, and King and V-Trans to discuss the schedule and the cost for the bridge slab replacement. And discuss solutions for the sidewalk and lamppost issues on segment six. We did get a contractor's estimate for the bridge slab. It's about $250,000 higher than the engineer's estimate. So, we, V-Trans needs to go back to Federal Highway instead of see if this is approved for, or either that or we're on the hook for it. So, I will have more information on that hopefully by March 16th from Federal Highway and V-Trans to see where we go next with that. Casillas and DuBois and King are currently looking at options for dealing with the sidewalks falling. Some of them, some of the spots that are really bad, this is not set in stone yet, which is probably bad when you say the sidewalks, but there's actually a product that can be skim coated on the top of it that adheres to it. So, they're going to try that in a couple of areas first to see how it works before they commit to it. So, we're going with that, we're going to go with that and see what happens. And the lamppost issues, Jeff from Casillas is thinking that it's the plugs that were put in the post when the computer system was pulled off it that triggered the sensor in the panel that one of them might be faulty, so he's just going to put the plugs in, see what happens. And the Cobra Head Lane out here right across the road, the lane itself has an issue. There's power going on to it, so they're going to replace the, they ordered the parks to replace that. So, that's where we're at. The grant application for the parking area has been submitted to V-Trans. We're looking at doing a redesign to Town Hall Sidewalk Roof. There will be a pre-construction meeting with Markowski and Alderson Elliott for the Park Street rebuild on March 10th at the Town Office. And we will do a public meeting after that at some point before we start construction so that we can get the Park Street residents caught up to speed on what the timeline and process is, so. And the Union Street Sidewalk Project will resume on the week of April 27th and will be completed by May 8th. They wanted to wait for the asphalt plans to open up so they could do the driveway. RAC News Wildlife Encounters was in town on February 28th. Over 400 people came to the two showings at the Town Hall to see the crazy critters that the analogs brought for fun educational experience, including 111 kids from the Roundland Intermediate School. March 1st marked the beginning of another Brandon-Pittsburgh collaboration with skiing at the Middlebury Snowball. Seventeen Brandon kids joined 12 Pittsburgh kids for the first four Sundays in March to tune up and rock out on skis and snowboards for the half-day program. Brandon RAC Basketball Season is ending, thanks to all the coaches. March 13th, Brandon Town Hall will host the local scene at 7:00 p.m. This teen-centric band showcase will feature Last Minute, Sweet Spinks, will be headlined by Squid Car. Tickets are $5 at the door. The 80's are back for a night after Brandon Idol 80's Explosion Concert being held on March 21st, doors open at 6:45, show starts at 7:00. $5 a person, you'll want to get there early because this will sell out, we're going to build. Nine Brandon Idol finalists, guest performers, a group member, and adult libations for a set-up courtesy of the folks at Maze Place. And baseball and lacrosse season are coming. If you're interested in supporting our kids by way of coaching or sponsoring a team, please reach out to the Brandon RAC Spring in Nearly Air.
Thank you, Mr. Rapperton. Questions for the Town Manager?
Start with the Board, Mr. Luich.
I did have a question, David, just what is the lamppost issue that you referred to? Like, are they not lighting or something?
So, yeah, we've had some issues with the lampposts on the ones that are on Park Street and in front of the old Butiker Building, our Walk Valley. They just randomly don't come on, like, it's, well, intermittently, they're fine for a month and then they don't, so. They haven't found an electrical issue with the wiring and everything, so. These plugs, they weren't installed after we pulled that computer system out, so they're thinking that one of the plugs is maybe got some moisture in it and it's gotten some issues.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, I'd just like to go back to the, maybe to the cost of the bridge slab. Thought when we met last spring, we had three options and they gave us pretty solid figures, but now they're going to change it dramatically.
So, those figures were from the engineers, so that was Houston O'Neill that gave the cut. Kind of like when we did the Oracle cover, so the engineer's estimate, and then based on the cut. Because this was done, V-Trans wanted to do this as a change order in segment six to keep the funding mechanism in place. So, it wasn't a bid project, it was just a change order through segment six. And like Casillas gave us the numbers last week, it was 9.25, I believe. So, it's quite a bit higher, so we met with them the day to see what could be done to try to get that number down and see if V-Trans and Federal Highway was even going to fund any overruns like that.
Okay, that was my next question, so we don't know what percent we're going to be in?
We don't know yet, and that's what we'd like to figure it out so soon and see if we can afford to spend more money on this and if not, look at other options, I guess. I don't know if we have any at this point.
Mr. Rapp? Mr. Wyman? Questions for the Town Manager from the public, Mr. Berry?
David, with respect to the sidewalks, I love the sidewalks. In the final state out there, sidewalks are kind of a signature piece for the work that was done. And the problem we're talking about is very widespread. I mean, sidewalks, sidewalks, it's up and down to just about everyone. But it doesn't seem like a severe problem. It doesn't seem like it's got a lot of depth to the problem. Almost like maybe when they were finished, it floated too much or something like that. Did they give any thought to maybe grinding those surfaces?
So, we did discuss that today and after doing, talking to some other engineers about, you know, this issue with the sidewalks falling. The reality in a couple more years, it's going to be worn out anyway just for regular traffic, but that there is a, they're going to look at doing a grind and see how it works and if it can be sealed at that point to do that, so. There are some where they're going to have to be worked on extensively because they're pretty bad, but I think the smaller spots we'll be able to either grind down or maybe just leave them alone. So, we're waiting to hear from what Casillas and engineers want to do.
Not bad, Steve.
You know, we, the concern is that we pay for the sidewalks to be completely smooth, so. Understand things happen, but we'll go from there and see what we can do.
Okay.
Other questions for the Town Manager or comments, Mr. Beckwell?
I first want to thank you for your Select Board meeting last year. You allowed my father-in-law to talk for us at Three Cone and Square. And I would like for that, since we are on second shift and sometimes not able to make these meetings, for that to continue in our absence.
You'd like Mr. Thompson to represent the interests of the property owners of Three Cone and Square?
Yes.
Is there objection on the Board? No? I think that would be fine.
For Dave, I'd like to hear what's going on with the sidewalk roof.
It's a redesign after emailing you two back and forth. Addressed the issues and concerns and they're looking at seeing what they can come up with to pitch it to, towards the north side of the building. So, I don't have anything back from them.
Okay. Also, if you do try to contact us about any further things that do involve our property, could you send more than one email or call us or walk in off of the door so that we know? And it's not a month and a half of we didn't hear from you because you didn't, you overlooked your email. That was my bad, I apologize for that. And as far as the design goes for the structure, we did speak with the architect who drew up the plans that we looked at. And I'm a little concerned because he stated that the town was given our consent, me and my wife's consent, for the water to be shed directly onto our property.
So, that was not how the conversation was and actually after I spoke with Seth, when you emailed him about it and called Joe at RAC Construction and said, I don't believe that that was ever the conversation because we were upstairs, actually, there were three of those. It was Joe and this, I can't think of the guy's name that was doing the design. The conversation was based on what, when, I believe it was you that came over with Bill or maybe it was, I don't remember, it was like a year ago when the ice came off the roof and you were concerned that it was dangerous. That was the only thing that I said to them. So, I don't know where the other part came from. I talked to Joe at RAC about it and said, "Do you remember me having this, saying this in this conversation?" He's like, "No." So, I don't know where that came from and I'm sorry that that's how you heard it. You know, I just, as you know, we've spoke a couple of times and I would have rather, and I know that you guys don't want to stay involved with it as much as I was hoping, but I would really, that was the reason why I emailed you back in, or it was February, to get your input on us so that you guys know what's going on there and then we could come up with a good solution. That was, that was what I was trying, hoping to do.
Well, I do appreciate that and when we did talk that time, we've talked, I think, at least one more time before that about the same topic of slate and ice and stuff coming off the roof and damage to either our vehicles or potentially to us in our driveway or people walking down the sidewalk. I lost my train of thought, should I?
So, our main point is that Tony doesn't check his email, he sent him one email. I'm the one that checks my email regularly and we just feel like having one email is not enough of an intent if you really want to involve us in the process. We're sorry that we slightly, well, you, you didn't further up, like, follow up, excuse me, on this one email that you sent. And we would have loved to have been more part of it in the initial stages, but.
So, I did not have your email shared until I got it from you just a couple of weeks ago. And I, you know, I did speak because I know that Bill Moore speaks with you folks quite a bit too. I know that, you know, he heard a few, you know, he talks to you more than I do, I guess, sort of can say. And I had asked him a couple of times had he heard anything. And I think it was the weekend when he spoke with you that that was what he, alright, let's talk about it. You know, I understand the issue and it's unfortunate that you guys live this far away from that door and the roof. And that we inherited where this door is on the side of this building. And I don't know what the right answer is other than put the door in front, which is, you know, that'd be great if it was on the gable end because everyone would have to worry about this. But I don't want it to cause issues with the neighbors either. You know, it's very tight in this whole area and with the bank, with this, with the town, it's all, we're all on top of each other. So, I, well, we understand that. But my question to you right now is, why was that design your go-to? Why was shedding directly on our property the go-to instead of the other two options that you had? When the design was discussed, well, you saw the email from RAC Construction that the pitch on the roof wouldn't cause, I'm not an engineer, so I'm going to, I don't want to play one on TV very, I'm not an engineer. And that's why we paid them to come up with the designs. That with the asphalt roof, the snow would be sitting there more than it would be sliding if it was made in a roof or a slate roof.
One comment on that, I understand you're not an engineer, no, it's from the engineer or whatnot. But if you have that much snow coming off a roof at 40 feet high, you got any angle to that roof, it's going to bounce right off of that and it's going to take out our front windows. Or if we're in there in the driveway, it's going to take us out. And you had talked to us about the other roof that you have, I guess, on the other side of the building, how the snow went through the roof.
I think it was a piece of slate that went through it.
Well, either way, they both carry a lot of weight to them. And if you just designed a generic roof like that over there, then it's going to happen. So, our suggestion to you a year, two years ago and last week was pitch everything towards the back of your property.
And that's what we moved forward with. That's why I wanted to talk to you guys first. I mean, we can go around on this, but that's the main design is, it's pitching it towards the back and if we can't come up with it, we just wonder what, I mean, we'll figure something.
Why wasn't that the primary option, is what I'm getting at?
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not the engineer.
And, and everyone's safety concern here. When there's snow and ice on the roof and it starts to warm up and it melts and you see it coming down at the sidewalk, why is that side entrance allowed to be open?
I think that's our only accessible entrance, right? I mean, for hand-to-hand access. I mean ADA, that's our only ADA compliant entrance to this building.
So, wouldn't it be better to cancel the event, move it to some other time or, or build a roof structure? I know the limit's been put on the budget at $30,000. Who cares how much it's going to cost if it's going to save someone's life?
There wasn't a limit on that. I mean, we, that was discussed, I think the initial cost was $28,000 and I believe the Board approved to go no more than 30, but if we came up with an $80,000 project and we had the funds to do it, I'm sure the Board would do the same thing with the amount of money, you know, sort of puts a cap on, once we have a number, like, we're, they're right.
Okay. Well, I have, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comment from the Board? I want to thank you for pursuing with rights the change to the design. I think that we're all, you know, we've inherited a substantial building that the Friends of the Town Hall, you know, spearheaded a rejuvenation effort to put back to service, you know, after a long period of neglect. There are limited, you know, lot lines available on any side of the building and it's a tough building to retrofit for access to the disabled. And access to every member of the community is not only the law, but it's the community value that we would want to maintain. We certainly want to keep the building in use, but realistically, you know, the old basement entrance on this side cannot be made to work from an accessibility point of view. And so, at some point, you know, before, I think, any of us really was heavily involved with town fairs, the decision was made to make that side the accessible entrance and to, you know, slant even segment six, right? The parking was identified to have that ramp down toward Route 7 and then come back in. There's all of this, all of these things at play. I think that, I think he's trying to do his best, we're trying to do our best, we're trying to do our best by you and we appreciate the concern that you brought to the Board and hope that, hope that a solution that is acceptable to all parties will be found.
Yeah, that was going to be the main point that I wanted you to take away as well. I wanted to amplify Dave's comment that we want to be good neighbors and we want to come up with something that works for you and it works for us too.
May I?
Excuse me?
May I?
Please, please.
So, just like you guys inherited this and the problems that go with it, me and my wife inherited or purchased from failing the house next door and all the problems and the battles that have preceded that. So, we are more than willing to work with the town however we can, but we will not allow ourselves to be abused by the town whenever it seems good.
I would, I would take issue with using the word abused. I don't think there was any malicious intent on anybody's part at this point.
Well, maybe I was, I'm sorry, I apologize for that.
But we do, I think we do all share your concern and the town is not going to adversely impact your property.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Other questions for the Town Manager, Mr. Carr?
Dave, is Casilla where the light that's up on the monument, you know, the four side lights that shine up on it? There's a busted light there, Brandon inside, if you can just mention that to hear me.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Other questions or comments for the Town Manager? Mr. Beeler?
I note in the discussion of the concrete slab out at the corner here, one of the reasons for not entertaining opening the waterway back up was a time element to get it done quickly. Now, it doesn't appear that it's going to be done so fast, so the cost of opening it back up as a waterway was never really presented. I know we have a truck issue there.
I don't want to go too far down that road because I don't think that the premise is accurate. I believe the reason that we, that it was not even recommended. It came in the specked-out reports of you can do this, you can do this, you can do this, or you can open a backup.
Right.
And they did not recommend opening a backup because of truck traffic, not because of time.
Right, I know we have the truck issue on the corner, so.
Right, so I think it is, I think as long as we have an employer with a facility that's going to require these trucks, I don't think that that's an option, am I correct?
No. Well, right now, we're setting them up Prospect Street because of the corner.
Right, right.
Has that been working okay?
It seems to be, though, I haven't got a single call on it yet. Probably tomorrow. But when we first did the, what I remember when we had the three estimates, like, the least one was only like $107,000 less than to do the whole thing, which is why it was recommended to go with the high one.
I think they recommended three, right?
And they had three, right.
But then the one that they didn't recommend was cheaper still. So, is Prospect Street a potential permanent solution or not?
The way it was discussed today was that if it was to be opened back up, because we did talk about it and Jeff did some drawings on it, that it would still eliminate any large vehicles to be able to make that corner because the bump out would have to go further because of the open part. So, it would probably affect some businesses on the street too. On secondary, with the mancun with chemo, it would be difficult for two-way traffic all the time and with that being wiped out. We'd probably have to have a no left turn coming down and a no right turn going up.
Okay.
I'm surprised. But, but I mean, you just talked to him today, I'm glad it came up, frankly, you know, I'm glad that possibility came up. But I don't think it was a timing issue, I think it was maintaining a wide turn issue.
Yeah, I know that trucking is an issue.
Yeah, yeah. Other questions for the Town Manager or comments? Okay, if not, the next item is number nine, which is public comment and participation. This would be stuff for the Board, basically, if not for the Town Manager. So, anybody, any member of the public have anything tonight for the Board that doesn't appear on the agenda? Okay, if not, you've done number 10. Number 11, is the road posting?
So, the road posting, your packet reflects, you want to name the changes that are here to keep Newton Road and that portion of Town Farm from Newton to Richmond basically open so trucks could still get into the gravel pit. I think that was the big, the big change on there. And that was, that was everything else is the same.
I'm curious why Syndicate Road isn't on there?
Because Syndicate Road's in Pittsburgh. It's Carver Street all the way to the town hall.
Oh, I thought it was Syndicate.
Syndicate and Pittsburgh.
And so, is Carver, is it posted on Carver?
Well, if they were to go through that, they would definitely miss that.
Oh, I know. It seems like it ought to be posted. Sometimes it's just closed.
Well, right, we don't want to retain all of it all the way through, so I don't know.
I mean, does it make sense to post that? Is there a problem posting?
A kind of couple trucks got stuck there, but usually it was due to Route 7. I had an accident on Route 7 and a truck went down and it stuck, but now.
I mean, if there's no cost and there's no problem, it seems like it'd be good to add it. Unless I'm missing something.
Any thoughts on posting Carver Street? You're probably, you're imagining being from the old, from Nickerson Road south?
Yeah, right towards the jury.
What's down there, a couple houses, the railroad crossing? Not too much else.
I mean, if you think it doesn't need to be done, I'm good with that too. It's just that I walked down there a lot and it just seems like a, you know, one that would be posted. That's the only way to bring it up.
Is Pittsburgh posted from there? I don't know if they would have maintained from there. Oh, you mean at all? There's a couple houses on it down there.
But Nickerson Road is covered, right?
Nickerson Road. Nickerson, you can not post there, Nickerson Road is not always. And I believe that that road was built up back And I believe that that road was built up back in the quarry days for the trucks. A quarry on Carver Street.
Nickerson's a good cheat.
Let's pleasure the board.
Does this take a motion?
We're going to have to do a mo, let's have a motion to adopt it as it's presented and if we want to amend it, we'll have it.
I'll make a motion to adopt that amendment.
Second.
Motion and second to adopt a road notice as the posting notice as it's prepared. Any discussion or further amendment?
I suggest we add a little over in the curve.
The intersection.
Nickerson South.
So Carver Street, south of Nickerson Road, yes. To the Pittsburgh town line. Is there a, there was motion? Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Second amendment, is there discussion on the amendment? I don't know the number of Carver Street off the top of my head. Imagine we can look it up and fix it. All right, all in favor of adding, uh, adding a segment of, the segment of Carver Street, south of Nickerson Road to the road posting notice. Say.
I have one question that I might want to look up.
Yes.
Because this is for class one and two, three highways, I don't have a highway map in front of me, that could be a class four because I know it's like Churchill Road's not on here and all the other class fours, so.
That class four is unmaintained, I used to live in a class four road and I know that there's been work done.
No, on this notice that we get from the state, it says town highways, class one, two, and three highways, that we wouldn't post a class four.
Well, exactly, so I'm, I guess I'm thinking it could be a class four because I mean, I've seen town work done on that part of the road and that would make it a class three, right?
No, no, we maintain some class fours.
I mean, technically we've got a class four.
You've got to take care of yourself.
Well, you've got to take care of yourself, but it's technically posted anyway because you're class three, usually it's a class three before you get to class four.
So this notice is on this list, there's a lot of things around here for us.
So, uh, do we want to post Carver Street, south of Nickerson Road if it is a class three road?
Sure.
But not if it is a class four road? Is that acceptable? Acceptable amendment, okay. All in favor of posting Carver Street or adding Carver Street, south of Nickerson Road if Carver Street is a class three road, south of Nickerson Road, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no? Any extensions? Was that unanimous? That was unanimous. Main motion, all in favor, or is there further discussion on the road notice, road notice as it's been amended tonight? No? If not, ready to vote, all in favor of the road posting notice as it's been amended tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Any extensions? Yeah, I have it, okay, that's great. Item twelve, discuss the draft policy for selling a town asset that's came to the board at the last regular board meeting and is now been laid over and is ready for debate, deliberation, consideration. And in our policy, we can deliberate before we have a motion, so if anybody would like to offer a conversation on this, announce at time.
Yeah, I will, Tim, I know you wrote it, I like it, I agree with almost all of it. Um, I think it gets just a little bit blurry in the second paragraph down here we were talking about. While the state of Vermont has a statute that requires the town to post notes of sale of the property they require, requirement of gathering a petition with five percent of the town's legal voters seems overly burdensome to a brand new citizen who might want to acquire. And it's, so it's someone that actually wants to stop the sale, not acquire. They might want to stop it so they can buy it, but that, that sentence just needs cleaning. I don't know, I don't know how to recommend it, but, because smarter than me is the word, so. But I, that's, I get lost right there where it says might want to acquire the property, so last little bit of it, I don't know. So I did mention that as a suggestion.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what the right, because they would, they would have to get five percent of the voters to stop that sale so that they could then offer a sale, you know what I'm saying?
Right, I guess technically, um, the five percent requirement is just to stop the sale.
Stop that sale.
And that's true.
And the way that's worded, it made me think it was, they need to get five percent of the voters to.
Well, if they wanted, if they wanted to buy it, they would have to have five percent of the voters.
And I think what we're really trying to do is clean it up so we get maybe more of an auctioneering type basis at the beginning. You know, get the word out to everyone at the, at the beginning.
Certainly transparency is, I think, the majority of why I worked writing this policy. Yeah, that, that background paragraph was really just one, I guess, one example that I wanted to put in there as a rationale rather than a, a complete, um, I mean, the policy part below is the part that really is the implementable, um, direction. And so, um, I mean, I'm happy to reword that piece if you'd like to change the, um, from saying who might want to acquire to just say who might want to stop the sale. Would that, would that answer your concern?
I don't think so, and I, and I think that in past we've had the practice of when we do a policy that we kind of talk about it one week because we, we don't go until the next meeting anyway, so it's time to try to see if that makes sense, I don't know.
Right, because Seth, I think this is the first time we brought this up. I think it was your policy to have the layover and this is the first time they've seen this.
I don't think so.
Really, it's up to the board.
Did we have this last time?
No.
I don't think so either, I think I gave this to after the last meeting. I, um, I put it in the packet and, um, I gave it to Dave after, after the last meeting.
But I mean, how, how did I get this one that I met with you last Friday? Like, do you know what I mean? Did we just, how, how did I know, was it in your packet? I don't know, like, you, you got it Thursday, in fact.
Oh, I don't know, maybe I emailed it up. Oh wait, because I'm pretty sure we didn't put it in the last meeting.
Yeah, we put it in the last, it wasn't the last.
Tom gave us the reminder day after the last meeting.
Oh, so maybe Dave distributed it?
I, I emailed it and I might have included it or emailed, but I think that's, okay.
I gave it to a line.
All right, so that's fine, so do you want to make a revision between meetings?
I'm happy to make that change, except for the board would like, pleasure the board, I'm like, it still carries the, um, intent of my, of my original policy, so sure.
Right.
Are there other suggestions, I'm open?
Well, I mean, I, I don't want this as a suggestion, I, I mean, the problem I have with it, I don't disagree. And I think if we put our equipment, when the equipment is out there, truck or rig or whatever, I think, I think that goes out the bit anyways. What I have concerns on property is if I understand the state statute right, that we can't sell a piece of property for more than what we acquired it for. On a tax sale, is that correct? Now, using that piece that we had at the last board meeting, which happened back in nineteen thirty-nine, we're going to spend more money to have our town manager research that in time to go back and see what that was rather than just taking all this, taking what was, um, offered. That's a, that's a concern that I have with it. I know that we did a, I know that we did a town lot on Birch Hill and it was a beautiful building lot. It's a lot that probably should have gone for twenty-five to forty thousand dollars. The back taxes that we took out for, I believe, was twenty-five hundred or something in that general area. So that's what we had to take for that building lot.
Well, we could, we could take more, we just have to return the difference to the previous owner, right?
Right, and to go back into, you know, you start going back into some of these swamp plots that were required even back in the sixties, seventies. We're going to spend a lot, my, my personal feeling is we're going to spend a lot more money hiring Dave or somebody to research us to see where this money's going to go. Then we're, then we're going to get out of it. Um, it's, you know what, I, I appreciate what you're trying to do, but that's, that's my concern on it.
Well, won't that problem exist either way? Because technically, if somebody offered us, you know, more money for something, wouldn't we still be required, according to what you're telling me, to give back any overage over what the land value was? I mean, if the problem exists with my draft, it should exist without my draft.
It did exist without my draft.
Well, exactly, so if the problem exists either way, it wouldn't be an increased cost.
No.
In other words, all, all this does is require a two-week wait between when somebody offers us something and when we accept an offer. It doesn't do any more than that.
Right.
And I'm also, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I think we're going to need time in each case to find out what we acquired it for, you know, like that fellow offered a hundred dollars. And we don't, you know, we didn't know at the meeting till we saw what we acquired that for.
Well, and I'm, I'm hearing, I'm wondering, and this is where some clarification might help, it sounded like the operable part of your comment was tax sale of mine. And I don't think the swampland is a tax sale, we aren't selling swampland in a tax sale environment.
No, but it's okay, but my, my point was that if we, if we acquired that money from taxes and we acquired it, there was.
Oh, is that how we got it?
On that particular, on that particular piece of land back in nineteen thirty-nine, if that was acquired for taxes of forty dollars due, then technically, we aren't supposed to sell that land for more than forty dollars. We can, we can, we can sell it for the, with the attorney's fees and legal fees that we acquired on that. But my point being that, you know, for that, you know, how many hours are we going to, how many hours are we going to ask our town manager to step into this and if he puts three, four hours into that, that's, that's where my concern is on the.
So wasn't your expectation when we got the hundred dollar offer last meeting, that Dave was going to look into what we originally acquired the property for and prepare to give back any overage?
Absolutely not, because the meeting was a twenty-five to thirty-dollar land if you acquired it for.
Exactly.
With your, with your fees and your closing cost and whatever, um, my thought was the hundred dollars would have been an acceptable offer.
So you wouldn't have required any research on it?
I don't believe we'd have had to.
Yeah, yeah, I guess I see the similar.
For forty, you know, sixty.
Well, it's easy to do with a tax sale once free sale, you don't like the one on North Birch Hill, I don't know, that was what.
That was back in, uh.
It was a while ago, but I mean, that was easy.
I want to say that was.
How much it was.
Early eighties, maybe?
It was taken for, so.
Yeah, those are obvious.
But just like, the then have, the different property that we actually had, the state and the fire, um, we're getting appraisal done on that to see what it's worth so we can list it.
Right.
So it will be listed publicly.
No, I mean, that can be, that's going to be listed, that will be.
That's all.
I don't know my reason, I was wanting to get the bridge lab done, but, you know, it will bring, it'd be nice to know what it's worth and what the market values on it.
Is there any benefit to expanding the policy to be more comprehensive in the, in the sense of talking about the legal and advertising fees that we talked about previously and saying that in the event of selling land, the purchaser will also be paying for the town's legal and advertising fees? Um, I mean, the board kind of established that as an ad hoc consensus, but is there benefit to working into a policy if we're going to have a policy for selling assets?
I mean, I'm, I'm open to adding that as a, a policy in number four, because we have three issues now. It, it seems like that already exists, but you know, as you said, to be comprehensive and we did talk about it the last meeting, sure, I mean, it might make sense to.
I don't know if it does exist, because I think in the past we have advertised and not asked the buyers to pay, or, or not, no. We always ask the buyers to pay.
No, we're not asking buyers.
We have not asked the buyers to pay. So it's not been the practice.
Well, and, and, right, and so I, um, I don't think it needs to be the practice now, but if you're suggesting it should be, I'm open to that amendment.
You don't think we should ask the buyers to pay the legal fees?
Um, it hasn't been the practice and I think that, um, assuming that we're going to get enough value for the sale price of the land, um, you know, what we make off the land will cover our costs. And, and for that matter, if they offer something and it doesn't cover our costs, we can just refuse the sale. I mean, because as selectmen, we can still always choose which offer we're going to take or refuse. So I guess I'm saying it, it, it hasn't been a problem in the past and so I don't see any reason to complicate this, but as I say, I'm open if you want to include it in there to make it comprehensive.
I, I just was thinking that it would make sense to have a single policy that kind of touched on the issues that.
So how are you suggesting we work that?
As, as we said, you know, the, in the, as you say, in the case of land for sale, the number two, I'd say in the case of land for sale, because that's the only thing we have to notice, right? We can sell a truck without a notice.
Oh, yeah, that, or actually no appointment one afternoon.
So in the case of land for sale, um, the person making the offer, or however you want to, the potential purchaser, buyer, will be required to pay the town required, statutorily required legal advertising fees. Legal advertising fees, it's a legal ad, right?
In addition to the.
In addition to the.
The price of the land. Okay.
It just seemed like, you know, last meeting that, that seemed like everybody at the table thought, well, yeah, of course, we should ask them to pay the legal fees because we don't have those money. Okay.
Pay for, um, required advertising. And did you say closing costs as well?
I did not.
Okay, great. So just required to pay for advertising?
Usually me and whoever's purchasing it, but it's not a couple exceptions, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'll put that in, why would we pay for required advertising? And then, um, we did touch on this tonight, but what, what will this do in terms of like, if we do have equipment that we want to trade that?
Yeah, I, I, um, my intention with writing it was to, um, be as broad and inclusive as possible. And I guess, um, and, and it says assets specifically to include land or equipment or I, I guess anything that's considered of value. And, um, and again, just to help everybody who's listening understand, all, all I'm suggesting is a two-week wait from when something's for sale that we agree to sell it, to allow anybody who might want to say something or offer more. And like in the case of a vehicle, for example, um, there's a whole bunch of people in town who have different kinds of businesses that use different kinds of trucks and things. And, and I, I promise, because I know you've got a good response to that, I'd love to hear. Um, and so let's say we want to sell, um, like for example, the cruiser, that's a great example, we just sold a cruiser. And, um, and maybe somebody, you know, thought it was worth more than the two thousand we traded in for. And if, if that, if that.
We traded it, right?
I know we did, and so if, if in fact someone had wanted to pay us more, um, it would have been just the, the difference of having that cash in our hand and, and, you know, act, having to act in the, in the, the deal for buying a cruiser in the same way that the trade would, except it would have been a cash value. And so I, um, I see this as being again, a, a low requirement, um, transparent process. And, and I, and while I'm, I'm proposing this, I'll just say that as much as I have great trust in everybody here and, and everybody in our police department and in our, you know, buildings and grounds, this is really meant to make sure we never have the possibility of somebody creating a, a signed sweetheart deal where they give away something for below value and it kind of slips by. Um, I, I think that this is an effort to be as transparent as we can and, and allow townspeople to bet on assets that we're selling that they might want.
No, I, I think that that's well taken and, you know, I think that slowing it down, slowing it down anytime we're selling something.
Yeah.
So, so the question. Way before we were all here, the last time the town sold equipment, it was auctioned out. It was equipment that wasn't used anymore. Most of what we, all of what we have now is traded, we, we trade trucks in. Usually, um, whoever were buying trucks, whoever were looking for trucks anyway, so we, that's what we've done with our equipment is trading in for new vehicles.
And so would it hurt, um, when we were trading in a vehicle to, um, in one of our select board meetings saying, we're getting ready to trade in this vehicle? And that we have somebody in town that might have a business that wanted to pick up a truck or a grader or, you know, whatever it is we're trading in, could make a better offer? Because it seems like a, a possible benefit to one of our townspeople that they could buy this for the same deal we're giving to the deal. that they could buy this for the same deal we're giving to the dealer or the person we're buying this vehicle from.
I'll do that as well.
Well, as long as it's not a problem, I'm just trying to make it understandable.
I think Carver will.
Questions have been called. So we're going to not vote today, all right? We're going to ask him to make the revisions we talked about. Okay?
Okay.
We'll move along. Item 13, there are two warrants. Is there a motion? Yes, Mr. Powell.
Can we, can the public make a comment on the good work Tim did? And thanks, Giles, for doing this for us. We support it. Under paragraph policy number two, could, Tim, could somehow we put in there that a notice is also sent certified mail receipt requested to the bordering landowners?
What's the reason? I understand your suggestion. And it's a stronger suggestion than I think I intended for the policy. I guess I originally wanted to leave the discretion of the town manager to make a best effort. And I thought that would be sufficient.
Well, I don't feel it's sufficient, but I'm just a, I'm just a citizen.
Well, I appreciate your input. At the pleasure of the board, I'm happy to worry more strongly.
So just, I don't know if you guys saw the recorder this week. The Towne Proctor actually did post. There's a listing in there for, I think they're selling some land. Small ad. If you look, you'll find in the back. Maybe that's the way to do it. There's probably an advertising cost, but we could not quite...
And it's true that we have the buyer to pay for required advertising. That kind of covers that, that cost. I was trying to make it a no-cost policy. But if we have the buyer paying for required advertising, it could pay for required registered letters or whatnot to the...
Well, we can easily send letters out to a gent. I mean, we do it for zoning all the time. I don't, I would like them not to certify because they're costly, but...
To only make you know.
The only way to know it was done was certified receipt request.
Otherwise, they can eject. Mr. Chairman, again, one more point. Two weeks ago, we talked about this. I thought Mr. Carr made a great suggestion where we kind of put the word out here in a public manner that swamp lots and landlots that we do own are for sale. And for people that are interested in wanting to buy something to go look at their demand. Like Bernie had suggested, we do it in the town annual report. Unfortunately, that's 11 months away. Next time it comes out.
Shall I add that for number five? Suggesting that on a yearly basis, we list the property...
It could just be a one sentence saying in our county board that land that the town has for sale. You know, I think the point that it comes to the select board with these restrictions that if we can't sell it for more than we obtained it for and we want to get it back on the factuals, then we maybe need to add a piece of information that tells us what we acquired it for and what we really received in a wild estimate of taxes. Because in this case of this last one, we were going to lose one.
So in the case of the last one, is it recorded in the land record, like what the town obtained it for?
There's a deed in the land records. I'm sure there's a transfer tax in 1939.
Like, I mean, that's not wrong. Was there such a thing at the time?
I don't know if there are transfer tax back then or not. To be honest, it might be too old, but it's got to be some record somewhere that says that the town acquired it for such and such.
And my point is I want a particular research app.
Right now, if we acquire property, we might go to a public vote.
No, but I mean, on that particular piece of land, the research...
The deed was pretty easy to find. I have to see where, I mean, I'm sure the town records books would tell that what had to have been done in the select board meeting. But I think you guys didn't understand too. All I just brought it up to you. You know, that was...
You weren't proposing.
That was what it was. If you guys wanted to move forward, then we would start to do the light work on it.
But I think, I think that, you know, we've talked a lot about what the board does and doesn't do. And I think that policy governance is kind of the thing the board is supposed to do to give you as the contracting agent and so forth, parameters to work with when someone comes to you. That's how I took your policy. I think that it's, I think it's a good step in the right direction of transparency, Mr. Bill.
Well, I know in our closing, the town's attorney, Constance Pell, was involved. And she doesn't work for free. And also, even if you request a Freedom of Information Act, you have to pay that for that town employee's hour, you have to pay a certain rate per hour for that town employee to do the research that you requested in a freedom of information. So why couldn't this be the same sort of policy where you're paying a rate for the research? And the legal.
But it sounds like, it sounds like David's saying there are not always legal costs.
Then he wouldn't pay.
There's legal costs for the attorney preparing the deed, but a lot of the swamp plots that we've sold, we've not had an attorney present because they do the, you know, it's a five...
I just wouldn't exclude those costs and say just, you know...
So most buyers would have their own attorney, so...
I think we have to come to the realization there's some lots that we're probably better own. Like we own the Grandin Town Forest and it has its purpose and whatever. There might be some swamplands that we just can't sell because it's going to cost us money to sell them. And in that case, not costing us anything, then continue to own them. But if we can own again $100 for them, it costs us...
Well, it's true, though. Well, we have this policy, it won't cost us anything. And we haven't sold everything that we've had up there. And we had the lot behind the Legion that we had...
We did answer to one, I think. Board decided not to do it, so... And to Seth's point and Tracy's point, if you're selling it for $100 and you got it for a tax thing for $40, you're breaking the law if you're not giving the folks $60 back.
Well, if you know who to give it back to.
The guy in 1950. And that's where, that's where the point, you know, to make. To have that research back to see where you're going to send...
Where you're going to send the money to.
$25 back to his, gets it up.
It sounds like maybe the state legislature needs to take this issue up because it sounds really absurd to me. And we are sure that we can't sell it if we own it for X amount of time for any amount. I mean, we know that that's a...
Law right now is if we're taking a tax sale.
But if it's a tax deal, okay. We have to find out how we acquired it. Because the only reason I ask in my banking career, there was a timeframe when if we repossessed an automobile, we could only sell it for the amount the person, or even if they... Which in 98% of the time, you sold it for way less because they had ruined it. But now and then, there would be something that you would obtain. And they changed the law on that that you could, you could sell it for more. So I was just wondering if we know the facts.
Also, as a donkey tax collector, you can never own that property that you sold at a tax sale, ever, ever. That's, that's pretty...
Yeah.
If we, if we acquired it by purchase, then there's no restriction.
Yeah, that's why we can do it with the then property that we, the town acquired because we had an estate on it. It didn't go through tax sale. It was, you know, it was conveyed to us through an estate, so...
I think that's where we kind of made that decision on the lot behind the Legion because we figured that over the course of, over the course of the next 15 years, 20 years, that we were going to be able to generate more money.
Correct.
So I think somewhere in your policy, you should be held required.
Well, I mean, looked at that with the Birch Hill lot too of that, you know, what could we get for timber off? And we did do a timber sale. And they did bring us some money. But there wasn't a lot that was going to happen that would have taken a lot for that.
Correct. Yeah. Imagine.
So some more things Tim will add in and maybe a little bit more research if possible of the tax sales from one of those.
I'll bring it back. I'll have something in the next pack.
Thank you for the work. So now item 13, first warrant. Please vote.
I'm going to approve the first warrant, $129,390.24.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Coolidge moved, Mr. Wyman second. Are there any questions on any of the bills in this warrant? If not ready to approve, all in favor of the warrant as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no? Any extensions?
I abstain.
Mr. Bailey abstains. Item B, the Route 7 warrant.
I think motion to pay the Route 7 warrant in the amount of $16,352 before the group's end.
Motion by Mr. Wyman. That is set by Mr. Coolidge. Need discussion. And if they had a chance to look through those.
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor of paying Route 7 construction warrant as presented, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no? Any extensions? Yes, I abstain. Mr. Coolidge moves to adjourn. Is there a second?
Sure.
There's a second.
Nice to see you next time.
All in favor, say aye.
If you turn it on yourself for a minute, I'll see you.